This is a WGNS Action Line, talking with Rutherford County newsmakers about what matters most to you. Now your host, Scott Walker.
In studio with us today, we have Rutherford County Commissioner Craig Harris. Craig, how are you this morning?
I'm doing good, Scott.
So what all is happening right now within the county that maybe folks don't know about or is coming up soon?
Well, you know, it's kind of at the end of the year and holidays are coming up. So we haven't had a whole lot on the agenda, but some of the things, you know, we're dealing with is, is things what we always dealt with is, you know, our growth and traffic and we have budgets coming up soon. You know, I know it sounds like we just had it, but it always keeps going.
You know, I always imagine being in politics, I just imagined getting, if I were in it, I'd get phone calls all the time, text messages, emails, people complaining or pushing for or asking for. Is that the case? Does that happen 24/7?
No, you know, some of the rural commissioners get a lot of calls. I'm in the city. So a lot of my calls, you know, are aimed at the city. So yeah, some of the Commissioner Pettis Reed and Robert P., I mean, they get some and I hear, you know, Commissioner Pearson gets a few calls. So people, you know, and there's nothing wrong with that. I mean, we represent 16,500 people in each district. So that's what your job is and your job is to respond to your constituents and help them and answer their questions.
A study by UT, just a few years back, I think it was the UT Boyd Research Center that released this study and it talked about how I think in year 2041, we're going to have around 700,000 residents in Rutherford County.
Yeah, we had a GNRC came out, I think it was a couple of years ago. And yeah, we're going to be very large.
That's crazy. I mean, I mean, that's almost a million people in 20 years or less than 20 years.
When we had a school facilities tax that just passed and I was for that and I helped negotiate that. But one of the things that happened was they put a growth rate on there. So you had to grow 10% every 10 years, which is about 2%. You know, some people say, well, what if we don't? I don't see it not happening. I mean, I just can't see Rutherford County not growing 2% every year. And based on all the studies that I have seen, we're going to double.
When you look at the county commission, when you look at issues within the county and within the city, there are several issues that keep coming up and those issues deal with everything from transportation to trash in the landfill and then the one we've heard at least the last five or six years, a forensic center.
Yeah. And Pettis Reed, and I know the mayor's brought this up, but Pettis Reed has been championing this for going on four to five years. So it's nothing new. The way I feel about a forensic center is, you know, I feel there is a need, but also feel that that money that the mayor is wanting to allocate towards it needs to go towards something else.
How much are we talking here?
Uh, I believe he said 15 million. So
Would that come out of the county's pocket or would that be funded through the state? How would that be?
No, that would be coming out of the county in funded balance. I believe that's how he's doing it. So I'm against that. And I'll tell you why is because we need to take care of our first responders and our sheriff's department. Their salaries are not in line against surrounding counties or even the city. And that money would give them a raise 10 to 12% that would make us competitive. So we quit losing people. We're losing good people. I think we lost three very highly qualified people because we can't afford for them to stay here because our salary is just not competitive.
When you look at the fire department as an example, because that's a new department. I mean relatively new. It hadn't been here for, for years on end. We've had volunteer fire departments years before, and then we got our own fire department, what, 10 years ago?
Yep.
So with that department alone, I think the last pay raise, was it 2% or something?
This year?
Was it this year?
I believe it was five.
5%, okay. Does that bring them up to the same level as, as an example, the city of Murfreesboro or Smyrna Fire?
No, it does not. And we're doing a salary study, we're in process of that right now so that we know exactly where we stand. But no, fire department, the city of Murfreesboro and the surrounding counties pay more for what we do. And Scott, why would we do the same job and make $12,000 less a year?
That's a big difference.
It's a huge difference. And that's why I think that spending on transfer stations and spending on forensic centers is totally unnecessary. And we should use that money to try to get our first responders up to a decent amount.
While we're paying less, we're also in the process of giving more, more duties to the firemen each and every day, it seems like, because you know this for a fact, over the years, we've seen the duties of firemen grow from just responding to fires period to now responding to accidents, to now providing certain levels of medical care. I mean, it is a job that is growing as far as the duties that one fireman actually performs.
Well, our EMS ambulance, they, they have so many calls in a day. And it's unbelievable how many they call. And, and we just, we're a big county, Scott. We're not, we're not what we was 30 years ago, you know? And, you know, I think you just said, we know, have volunteer fire department. We are 350,000 population and you can imagine how much and how big the county is and how much the fire department and, you know, the ambulance service, it does all the county.
Yeah.
That's one of the things on the forensic center is that there is an ambulance building that is part of that building. Now I'm for building that. Matter of fact, I mean, I'm going to push hard to build that. And I know Commissioner Beverly is really pushing that as well. But we have got to be, take public safety has got to be first. And Commissioner Pettis Reed, who is our chairman of public safety, he is focused on that and me and him are aligned on that.
When you look at the sheriff's office, they're responding to calls everywhere from the Kitchell community, then the next hour they get a call all the way out in Eagleville. They're literally driving, you know, 620 square miles and they're driving it, well, they gotta make, make pretty good pace in order to get to certain calls.
I mean, Scott, we have one car doing a, just an unbelievable square mile.
Yeah.
You know, one. So, and we have so many openings, you know, especially in the jail, 911 calls, you know, booking. It's unbelievable how many openings we have. And that's because we're not competitive in our pay.
Now, one of the arguments that the mayor has brought up regarding a forensic center is that it is needed more so than us sending, you know, bodies to Nashville because it's needed by the sheriff's office for investigations.
Yeah. And like I said, you know, I'm not again against a forensic center. I just don't feel that it's time for one. Yeah. So I think we spend, I think, you know, the mayor said somewhere around $500,000 for autopsies. I think it's more like 360 something. But the problem too, also with a forensic center is in Nashville, it's probably owned. If that situation happens where it closes down or something, yeah, we would be in trouble. But it's not a gigantic major concern in Williamson County or any of the other counties. So I don't necessarily see the urgency of it. I see the necessity of it, but right now we need to take care of our first responders and try to get this county, you know, as safely as we can by having good quality officers and first responders.
And if this forensic center would cost Rutherford County $15 million, is that the first year, just building it?
Yes.
We have that money though. And you're proposing we use that towards pay raises for first responders.
Absolutely. And, and you know, I don't see anybody that really, that has paid attention over the last year and, you know, listened to our sheriff, you know, Mike Fitzhugh is a very good leader and me and him have had conversations and we had to take care of it, Scott. And you know, that $15 million could go a long ways. That could get them, get us back in line with other cities and other counties.
If we have these pay raises approved by the full county commission, how soon would that happen? And what kind of pay raise are we talking for the sheriff's office and for the fire department? And then for, let's say ambulances? I mean, how would we divide this money up and how many years would it be in existence?
Well, it's kind of like in, I think, 2019, 2020, I'm not real sure. We had to do a 20% raise to get our guy, get our first responders just to medium point. Well, now that's bypassed us again. So I feel like we probably need to be around 12.5% increase. And, you know, that would probably go into effect in the budget of 25. That's something that we really got to work on. How long will it last, Scott? You know, I can't really tell you, you know, because we're not, we're at the discretion of other people raising their prices and keeping their people. So, you know, as soon as we did 20% and raised these guys to a median price, then other counties and city went up 10, 15% and we couldn't, here we are, right back where we was. Hey, there's just so much we can afford too. And that's why I'm saying, let's allocate that money towards this problem that we have, you know? And there is a time and there will be a time for a forensic center. But I remember having a conversation with the mayor a year ago and I told him, I said, you know, are you going to build this without state money? And he said, absolutely not. There is no state money right now. And in my conversations with our delegation, you know, they're not seeing it.
With this 12.5% proposed pay raise for first responders, would this be like a systematic thing set into motion to where next year it'd be another 12.5%? Or would it then, the year following, it'd be 2%, 5%, 6%? What would happen?
No, it would, this would be a one-time thing. And then of course, we would have our CPI raises. We would have cost of living raises, which could be 2% to 5%. Depends on, you know, how our budget is and how strong it is. But I think it's a priority of mine. Two of the things that I really want to do in my last terms is, is I want to raise revenues, create revenues, find revenues for this county so that we don't have to get into property taxes. And that's hard to do, but we've had such a disconnect with our delegation and I'm really working hard trying to get our delegation and all of us back together, talk and, and the impact fee that the mayor tried to get through and, and the school facilities tax. I mean, there was, there was some hard feelings. There was some, some, you know, discussion and we got to get everybody back together. And I think if we can do that, we can raise revenues. A lot of these problems we can address like a forensic center and first responder pay and beautification of Rutherford County. And if we're going to have growth, like if we have growth, for instance, bringing in companies, I'll just say that.
Yeah.
We need to bring in companies that are white collar jobs, who can afford our houses, buy our houses and help us with property taxes. And that's what I want to see also.
And these companies are going to want good security, good fire response. They, they want better safety, I'm sure, in whatever city they locate in. So it makes sense to go ahead and move forward with a pay raise for first responders. It makes absolute sense because like you're saying, we're not going to be able to keep the first responders we have. We're just going to spend money to train them and then watch them walk away.
Yeah. And I mean, that's happening now. We lost three very good employees, Sheriff's Department, been here years. I think that they love Rutherford County. I think they want to stay in Rutherford County. But man, Scott, it's hard to turn down a job and make 12 to $20,000 more a year, you know? And that's, that's big. And then we have some, you know, some entry jobs that are not, you know, just not competitive.
And when you look at the cost, just to, just to make it through the day these days, things are so much more expensive than they used to be. The cost of a house, especially true. It makes sense that these folks do need more salary.
Yeah. And then, you know, our house prices, you know, we had an appraisal, I think it was two years ago. And I think my district went up almost 20%. I think we averaged around 20, 30% increase in, in property values. So if you have a tax increase, that's a big hit to people. And of course you can say, well, your house is worth more. Okay, let's talk about that. Yes, my house is worth more. I can sell more. But if I sell my house and then I got to turn around, buy a house, am I really making any money? Because the house that I'm wanting to buy is same amount, you know, unless I downgrade, that's going to be an expensive house.
Yeah. And for a lot of people, interest rates today are higher than when they last purchased a home or maybe when they refinanced last, whatever the case is. But the rates are higher today. So it's going to make that same house that's more expensive today even more expensive when you factor that in.
They've been up, I think in 2017, my house, I had like 2.8, 2.9 interest rate. Now it's up to seven.
Yeah.
You know, in some places eight, based on your credit score. But yeah, I mean, food costs more, gas. I mean, there's so much extra cost. And, you know, when you have certain people that are able to afford that, well, there's a lot of people that are living paycheck to paycheck. And some people work two jobs. And you know, when bread and milk and that goes up that much, I mean, it's, it's a big time burden on them. And we have to think about that.
Where does our county stand today on the ethics committee and the review of the property assessor's office here in Rutherford County?
I'm on the ethics committee and we had our hearing. We heard from the employees that came forward. We heard from Rob Mitchell. And it was the recommendation of the ethics committee to turn this over to the DA and the comptroller. And that's where we're at right now, you know? And, and Rob is cooperating. He's doing everything he can. And hey, we got to understand that everybody's innocent until proven guilty.
Yeah.
You know, and then in this local government politics, it's always jump to conclusions because it is human nature for us to build somebody up and it is human nature for us to tear them down. And tearing them down is a whole lot juicier of a story than doing the other.
We've heard so many different situations or stories revolving around the property assessor's office, everything from they wrongfully increased what somebody has a square footage of their home, thus leading them to have to pay more in property taxes. In fact, the county mayor said his home was one of those homes where they suddenly added 1,000 square feet or so to it.
Yeah.
But in those situations, all you can do is just research, investigate and try to learn more and figure out what happened. Was it a mistake? What did occur?
Well, I believe the DA referred it over to the comptroller. So that's what the comptroller's job is. And they're, you know, investigating right now. They do not comment on investigation. So we really don't know what's going on. But I know that is an active inquiry and what happens? I mean, we'll address that once it, you know, the report comes in and then we'll go from there. You know, like I said, innocent until proven guilty, Scott. And these accusations, you know, unless we have, you know, know this and I'm not privileged to that information, it's hard for me to comment on it and say anything.
The whole commission, they're, they're in the same boat for the most part. I mean, they've got the same information that the general public saw. I mean, there's not much to it yet.
Absolutely. And we'll know more once that comptroller, you know, investigation comes out. And then we could be able to answer these questions to you.
Again, with us today, Rutherford County Commissioner Craig Harris. Back to that forensic center. If that were to move forward, you probably don't, you're not thinking it's going to move forward this year, next year. It's in the making for the most part, but it got turned down by the county commission during the, what, last year? Or was it earlier this year?
Yeah. Well, we, we approved to have the engineering and architect designs, but we have not approved building this. It is not being built. Like I said, Pettis Reed is one of my closest friends and allies and he's for that. And I think Pettis is also being chairman of public safety. Pettis Reed is very strong with the sheriff's department and first responders. And I think that when he sees that we could use and allocate that money towards helping our salaries, I think Pettis would understand. But Pettis is going to keep fighting for it and I'm, I'm going to support Pettis. I just don't see the need to do it now.
In other words, we've got a forensic center within a 30-minute drive. We can utilize that. And more importantly, the first responders need a pay raise as opposed to us seeing a forensic center come to life.
Yeah. And I believe so. And, and, you know, we raised taxes and two years ago and it was a substantial raise. And, you know, I was part of that and, you know, and because I was trying to protect our deficit and I was trying to protect our AAA rating. But I did not support building a transfer station or building a forensic center. You know, I feel that we had to take that money that we raised and we have to address problems that we're facing now. For instance, you know, we have horrible traffic. We need to invest in our roads. We need to invest in our employees. These things that we need to do. And that's where my focus is.
Again, County Commissioner Craig Harris, we're going to take a short break and then we'll come right back. And when we come back, we'll talk a little bit more about different issues impacting Rutherford County, one of those being the opioid epidemic. And we'll find out if any change has been made there. And we'll learn more about that and several other items as well, including landfill, the future of the landfill. Stay with us. We do have more news and information coming up.
Broadcasting from the Middle Tennessee Electric Studios. MTE has provided light, comfort and connection to our community since 1936. As your trusted energy advisor, MTE is always here to help. Connect online or download the MyMTE app.
Hey folks, it's Mike Sparks, 49th District House Member. Running for reelection, want to ask for your support.
The issues Mike's championed include the First and Second Amendment Tax Cut Bills, passing legislation to improve mental health, the Safe Storage of Firearms Act. Plus, he sponsored affordable housing legislation that passed this year. Mike Sparks has been outspoken on Jefferson Pike for 20 years, which led to the $70 million widening project that's almost complete. We need Mike Sparks to remain in the State House.
This Mike Sparks, ask for your vote.
Welcome to Danny Brewer's Friday Pony Picks, sponsored by the Mint Gaming Hall at Kentucky Downs. The live racing meet for 2024 is now in the books and the thoroughbred racing game is building towards the Breeders' Cup. The cup will be contested at Del Mar on November 1st and 2nd this year. The place to play these world championships is Kentucky Downs. Featuring over 1,000 gaming machines, fine dining, live entertainment and Breeders' Cup wagering, this entertainment destination is just 30 minutes north of Nashville. For more information, visit themintgaming.com.
Danny Brewer here. Saturday, October 26th means we got one week to the Breeders' Cup. So let's get going across the country. First stop, Belmont, the Big A Meet, Race 8, the Grade 3 49er, three-year-olds and up, going one mile on the dirt. The number eight film star is our top pick, trained by Linda Rice, ridden by Red Ortiz Jr. Race 10 is the Grade 2 Mother Goose Stakes. Three-year-old filly's going a mile eighth on the dirt. Eight-horse field, the number three Tarifa is our top pick. Daughter Bernardini is trained by Brad Cox, ridden by Flavien Pratt. Let's head to Kealan next. It's closing day there. Race 6, the Bowman Mill Stakes, 72-year-old males going six foot longs on the dirt. The number two Terrapin Station, trained by Dale Romans. He's unbeaten in one start. Race 8, the Grade 2 Hagyard Fayette, mile eighth on dirt for three-year-olds and up. The number eight Hit Show is our top pick, trained by Brad Cox. A little super effect action here. We will put him with the number six Rattlin' Roll for Kenny McPeak. The number one Trademark, trained by Vicky Oliver. And then number three Uno Mas Bourbon, trained by Ian Wilks. Race nine, the Grade 3 Brian Station, one mile on turf for three-year-olds. The number four, My Boy Prince is our top pick, trained by Mark Cassie, ridden by Jose Ortiz. San Anita is where we'll finish. The race seven is the Grade 2 Twilight Derby, mile eighth on turf for three-year-old males. The number four, Stay Hot is our top pick. He's won three of five races in 2024. He's been in the money, seven of 10 lifetime starts for trainer Peter Urtens.
If you're planning an upcoming trip and want to include your pet, we have all the travel supplies you'll need at Animal City. This is Amanda at Animal City, inviting your family to come do business with my family. Animal City is Murfreesboro's hometown, family-owned pet store. We've had the honor and pleasure of serving the community for 33 years. If you want to see some photos of our adorable pets, feel free to check out our Facebook page, Animal City of Murfreesboro, Tennessee. We're at 919 Northwest Broad Street, right here in Murfreesboro.
The Action Line on FM 101.9 and AM 1450, Murfreesboro, FM 100.5 Smyrna. Listen and watch at WGNSRADIO.com.
We're broadcasting out of the Middle Tennessee Electric Studios. Middle Tennessee Electric has been serving to make life better since 1936. In studio with us this morning, we have Rutherford County Commissioner Craig Harris. And before we go on with jumping to different topics or anything here, here's a text message we got talking about salaries overall within Rutherford County government, not just emergency responders, but talking about how, it says they all need cost of living increases, pay raises. And there's a lot of employees out there in the county. How many employees does the county have as a whole?
Not counting the schools, around 1,500.
So if you include the schools, that, that's a lot.
Absolutely. And I think we gave a 5% raise this year. And then during budget, I proposed and we got through some cuts, an extra 1% for them. So I understand their frustration and, you know, we're trying to, to address every problem. And, you know, our county employees are just absolutely very good workers, very strong and hard workers. And, and he's absolutely correct. We need to take care of everybody, but we're trying to look at, at needs, you know, in government, there's needs in all areas. We gave them a 5% raise and, and, you know, another 1%. We're trying to stay above CPI.
When a pay raise is approved, does that also funnel down to the county schools or do they handle their entire department totally separate?
Oh, it's totally separate. No. The only thing we can do, we have no control over the budget of a school except paying for it. And we have what's called a maintenance of effort, which means that we cannot cut their budget from the previous year. We can keep it the same, but we can't go in and cut their budget. But the school, you know, Dr. Sullivan, they work well with us. We, we don't have like a major conflict. I mean, they tried to be as neutral, you know, in raising their budget. I think they work hard trying to have a balance.
Before we go on to the opioid epidemic, I want to bring up the county landfill. We don't need to spend a lot of time on it because I feel like it's talked about a lot, one of the heaviest topics almost. But with the landfill, what's the future going to look like there?
Well, one of the things that I was kind of upset about is there's some people in our government said it's closing in two years. Well, that's two years ago. We're still seeing another four years, you know? And they're saying 2028. The way I felt about the transfer station is that is definitely something that we needed. I didn't think we needed it right after tax increase because we get free trash for another four years. So we built a $20 million transfer station. And here's the thing that I had on it, Scott. The city of Murfreesboro, they're building a transfer station. Now, what I proposed and with Craig Tindall and Shane McFarland is we build one together. It's $20 million. We give 10 instead of 20. And then they come back and, you know, they said, hey, we won't charge you a dime, but the next one you build and you don't charge us a dime. And I proposed that, but it got voted down and, and a lot of commissioners want their own and I understand that. And it's a done deal. It's going forward. And, you know, of course, the county has made a deal with waste management and that was a contract that I was against. And it passed through purchasing and never came to the full commission. That's one of the things, you know, it's, it's kind of like waste manager is going to be using our transfer station more than we will.
And that contract basically, I guess, outlines the opportunity for waste management to come to the transfer station, pick up our trash and then transfer it, drive it elsewhere to be dumped.
Yeah. And their price that they gave us is good. Waste management is a very good company, very reputable. The thing that I was against is some of the minimums that they would charge us that we had to have. And where the county commission and the budget and the public works disagreed on is Mayor Carr is banking everything on all these private haulers coming in here and using us. And right now, we can't compete with Republic's price. So it's, again, it's that situation where, okay, you want to come here, there is a convenience of time. And he's absolutely correct on that. How much you want to spend for that time. But his target at the beginning of this was 150 a ton. Now I think he's down to 90 to 85 and they're paying around 70. So that's a lot of money. These guys don't make a lot of money. So I was against this contract and, and, you know, it didn't ever get to the county commission based on our private act. The purchasing department had final say on this and then they approved it. Now we go forward.
I want to go back to housing just for a second because I think housing and the landfill, waste, those all go hand in hand in a lot of ways. I know the city mayor, Shane McFarland, was on the air a couple of weeks back and he was talking about how some developers, they're inching outwards away from the city of Murfreesboro, but yet on that city line, but in the county, and they're starting to build larger neighborhoods, developments out in every direction around the city limits in order to avoid different fees, different zoning, different codes that are part of the city. And instead they're buying, they're deciding to work in the county and with the county instead. Is this going to cause any problems for the county as far as making sure that these new neighborhoods have the right police and fire protection? They have the right trash pickup? They have all those needed necessities?
I know yesterday that the planning commission has a plan that's coming out. I think they met yesterday on a, finalized in the draft, Pettis Reed and Jeff Phillips and all of the planning commission, Rhonda Allen, I'll give her a shout out. They are addressing these problems now. The thing about cities, they have sewer. For us, you know, to get really good neighborhoods, they, they got to have sewer. And the only way that they can get sewer is they annex the property. So we're in a situation where some of our lands rock and we have to be very creative in our solid waste and sewer. And I think that planning commission is dealing with that right now. I mean, you know, I've always believed that the builders should not be the full, have the full burden of our debt. And a lot of people, you know, say that. And, and that can be argued, but I don't think that they are the full burden of our debt. I really believe that. But I, you know, they are trying hard to do things, you know, building right of ways and, and they're trying to help as much as they can. But yeah, we are, we're growing and, and I feel like the planning commission is addressing that.
And these new neighborhoods, they have a step septic system, which is basically like a giant septic tank for the whole neighborhood to share in a sense. I mean, I know they all have their individual tanks, but in a sense, that's what we're looking at because we don't have the sewer.
Yeah. And then, you know, you got to bury that thing. And then you've got a bunch of rock, you can't put a septic, you know? And so there's creative ways that planning commission is looking at so that we be able to do some of these things. But we had to be on the right ground. And, you know, trust, these builders are going to, they're not going to buy something that's going to be unbuildable. And some might, you know, I mean, some might. But I think the planning commission is doing a good job and I think they're dealing with that.
Are we still seeing a problem throughout our county? And I'm sure other areas are seeing it too, if we are. Hedge fund companies coming in, buying 10, 20, 30 homes in one neighborhood or on one street and then turning around, using those as rental property?
Yeah, that's a big Yeah, that's a big problem, actually. And I'll tell you where the problem is. Rental properties don't necessarily adhere to HOAs. So some of the calls that I get, we're talking about calls, some of the current, and I'm going to work with our delegation to address this problem, is that when people want to change their HOA policies, they can't do it because they got to have a quorum. So instead of like, you got 30 houses that are rental, well, that builder or that investment firm's got 30 votes. You can't get a quorum. So what I'm trying to do is say, hey, you got 40 houses? You got one vote. You know, that way the HOAs can probably change up their guidelines and, and, and try to address some of the problems that they have as far as, you know, cutting the grass, or putting kennels in the front yard, or any type that damages the, the value of their home.
Now, with an apartment complex, there's always that argument that renters don't pay the same in property taxes. So therefore, the schools don't benefit as much. But when you look at an individual house that, let's say, a hedge fund company buys, that company has to turn around and pay those property taxes. So in those cases, it looks like they're getting the same in property taxes, the county is, by doing it that way, an individual home versus an apartment complex.
Yeah. And, you know, we just raised with this school facilities tax. We're going to have a $1.50 on commercial. So that's going to be a big increase as far as our taxes and collections. Now, anytime, they pay property tax on apartments. Now, that is passed on to the renter. They are paying. It's through the rent, though.
Yeah.
I mean, they pass it on. It's not like they, you know,
Oh, no. I know they still pay. Yeah. But I, I guess I'm curious, is that property tax, is it less when you look at the per unit price, if you were to divide it, to divide it all up? Is it a lower property tax than what a single-family home is going to pay on a piece of property in a neighborhood?
No, because they, I mean, we charge 40% on commercials, not a dollar, not a dollar a foot. So it's 40% on, and that's going up to $1.50 a square foot. That's going to bring in additional $4 million. And the $1.50 that I was, and then listen, when I pushed for this, not a lot of people, you know, was with me on this.
You're talking about new construction now, right?
Yes, new construction, but also, you know, $1.50 on new construction on commercial, which that's a, a big increase.
So in other words,
We never had that before.
Is that in place now?
Yes.
So when a contractor comes in, a developer comes in, they say, I'm going to build a 100-unit apartment complex. They got to pay $1.50 per square foot in tax upfront, and that's the school facilities tax.
Up to 150,000 square feet.
Okay.
So, yeah, you, you, there is a cap on that. And, you know, this, this law, it's, it's got some good points, it's got some bad points. But, I mean, we worked with the builders, and, and they came up, and they came up and tried to do some. Yes, I mean, I wanted to see a larger amount on square footage price. But we worked together, you know, our delegation worked hard on this. I'm proud of our delegation. They did everything they could to help this county. It's just one bucket. Scott, everybody thinks, okay, they got to do all the, the burden of the debt. No, we got to do other things. And that's what I'm going to do my, my third year term, is I'm going to find every way I can to raise revenue. We're looking at a mineral severance tax. We're looking at interest-free loans through the Tennessee Lottery School Lottery Funds. We're looking
So what would those loans be for?
Build schools.
Wow.
Yeah. I mean, you know, I think you, I think it was six months ago, and I might be wrong, they, the schools asked for $750 million over five years. I mean, Scott, that's three quarters of a billion dollars. And that's why it was so important to keep our AAA rating, because that AAA rating on borrowing money could save us up to two to three points, which is millions of dollars, when we had to build these schools and, and do a bond.
I hate that we have to borrow money. I mean, that, that cost us even more money.
Debt services, you know, probably, they asked me for a price a year ago, two years ago. What do you need? What do you need? What do you need? And I told the delegation, and I told everyone, we need around $30 million a year. That's where we're at on that.
As we close out this morning, we only have about four minutes left. But as we close out this morning, another, another issue that you've really been passionate about, the opioid epidemic. Where do we stand today? And are there still, are we still seeing an increase in overdose deaths because of opioids?
No, we're not. And we're actually starting to have a little motivation and making a difference. And, you know, one of the things, in 2021, we had over 133 deaths. And then last year, we had 101. That's a 16% decrease. And this month, we had five overdose deaths, and we had three suicides. So those numbers are usually in the, in the double figures. So we're seeing a, a decrease in that. Now, when we got the pharmaceutical money, you know, we got three, almost close to $4 million.
Do we get that every year because of lawsuits?
We get $500,000 every year, and we do get another substantial amount of money coming in. So it depends, though. It varies. And we've given out, Scott, over a million dollars. And we've, and we have brought the coalitions together. My vision and my dream was that we, as Rutherford County, sound the alarm and come together. And these organizations are coming together. Now, the two, the things that I've always concentrated on was awareness, education, and recovery. Big on education. A lot of people don't know that 90% of people addicted to drugs smoked or drank at age 12 to 13.
Wow.
So I went after that. Now, in 2021, I got with the superintendent, and we decided we're going to do a pilot program of three schools. So 2022, we had three schools, Scott. In 2023, that went up to 12 schools. In 2024, we revamped our education and started a program called HOPE, and it's in our curriculum. And this summer, we hired, we trained 80 teachers to teach a subject. And here's what we had in 2024. We brought this to 260 5th graders, 130 middle school, and 1,033 high schoolers. Now, for 24 and 25, that number goes to 3,250 5th graders, 13,700 middle school, 18,900 high school. We are going to have this program reach 35,380 students.
And this is a program that teaches the dangers of opioids, and kids need to avoid it, and I guess teaches them how to say no to that in a way.
Well, it teaches them, you know, the effects of it. It shows them the effects of it. It's not just opioids, it's also drug and alcohol and, and other drugs. But Scott, think about it. We had nobody in 2022 listening to this or seeing this. You know, we had DARE programs and stuff like that as an elective. This is in the curriculum. And you take it, and for us, and the school board, and the, and the school superintendent, to reach 35,000 students, it's, you know, it's just unheard of. And I am more proud of that than I can tell you anything. I'm proud of the death rates that are dropping. I'm proud of the Rutherford opioid board that we have. It's, our team is, is focused and determined to help this county. And that's, that's what I'm proud of. And, you know, people get mad. You know, Scott, I was homeless when I was 16. And if it wasn't for people helping me, I wouldn't be here. I feel like I'm a miracle. And I'm going to go out and help people, and I'm going, you know, because we need help. I always had that attitude and that ego, hey, I can handle any problem by myself, Scott. I can face it. I can face adversity, and I will solve it. Well, Scott, when it come to this, I failed miserably. It's, addiction is a horrible, horrible thing. And people don't understand how devastating it is. You know, the thing about addiction, it always kills me, it's something nobody thinks about. It gives you a little hope, you know? It lets you, it just gives you to think that you can beat it. And then, just like that, it takes it away. It's cruel.
And we're already out of time.
Okay.
Commissioner Craig Harris with us this morning. If anybody would like to contact you, reach out to you, should they, I don't know, send you an email? Is that the best way?
Yeah. And email me at ccotinc@comcast.net.
Well, thank you for joining us.
I appreciate you, Scott. It's always an honor to be up here.
Coming up next, a look at local news and CBS Radio News, right here on WGNS, your good neighbor station.